I will now call the December fourth, two thousand twenty-three Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. But before we stand and have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, if you are parked across the street to the north, that is a private parking lot and subject to be towed. The city parking lot is to the east. And we have no control over the private parking lot, and they have been known to tow people. So just kind of a public service announcement. Now, we're gonna stand and we're gonna observe a moment of silence. And we have two scout troops here. We have Troop three sixty-two and three one four eight. Once we conclude the moment of silence, and when I turn around and look at you, then you will start the pledge of allegiance. Clear as mud? Yes. Okay, let us stand and observe a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, troop. Come back and see us again. Okay, dismissed. That means you can go ahead and leave up here. Okay, confirmation of a quorum.
Councilmember Kayler.
Present.
Levise.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Edmondson.
Here.
Culpepper.
Present.
Mayor Ross.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Next we have the consent agenda unless our items need to be full, except a motion for approval.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kayler.
Aye.
Levise.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We're not used to having a packed house unless there's something controversial, so I am going to move, move a couple of items up. Uh, we have, uh, item twenty-seven on, on the agenda, the presentation of the Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association donation. We're gonna go to Chief Monks.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the, uh, Blue Springs Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association will be donating to the department twenty-seven thousand dollars tonight. We are going to use the, those funds for two different programs. The first is a mental health screening for all police officers on a, on a biannual basis that's required by Missouri State statute for officers to check in for their mental health well-being. We're gonna use that, uh, to, uh, part of those funds for that. And then the second, we're gonna purchase some technology called Live nine-one-one that will hopefully reduce, uh, our call response times by placing the nine-one-one call that incoming directly into the computer in the police car, so the officers can hear the live nine-one-one call as it's coming in and maybe be in that area and maybe get to the scene a little quicker. So tonight, we're pleased to have, uh, Tom Eckert and Paula Pickett from the Alumni Association and any of our, uh, volunteers or Alumni Association or anybody who wants to come down and take a picture with you tonight, Mayor, we'd love to do that, if you would.
And now that we do that, um, we have, uh, the Blue Springs South Air Force ROTC people here. We're gonna go ahead and move you up as well. All right, hate to do this, but I'm gonna have to.
Just in case he breaks the Dino.
Good. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're gonna have you, guys and gals in blue. Come on up here. Now, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take your picture. We're gonna do a proclamation. I figure you need this one army guy to balance your air force people.
So that's why I brought Mike.
Okay, I have, I have a proclamation here that I'm gonna read. It's relatively short, so normally I don't read the whole thing, but I am because I think you guys are deserving of it. It's where the Blue Springs South Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Raider Team will be honored, which is today, December fourth, at the Blue Springs City Council Meeting. Where the Blue Springs South Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Raiders Team are back-to-back Air Force National Champions. For, that, that's worth an applause. Go ahead and applaud them on that. Yeah, for a second year in a row at the Raider Nationals in, what is it, Molina, Georgia, they are the fastest Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps team in the nation. Another one of those. Where the Blue Springs South Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, man, that's a lot to say every time. Program is led by Colonel Stan Cole, Senior Master Sergeant Courtney Jones, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Zach Kosa, and Cadet Colonel Anthony Lorick. And where's the mission of Blue Springs South Junior, Blue Springs South Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps program is to develop citizens of character. The program prepares high school students for leadership roles while making them aware of their rights, responsibilities, and privileges as American citizens. And now therefore, I caution all of the mayor of Blue Springs and the Blue Springs City Council do hereby proclaim December fourth, twenty twenty-three as the Blue Springs South Air Force Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps Raiders Team Day, witnessed therefore with my signature and the city clerk. Anyway, wanna present this to y'all for a job well done. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. My dad, you put my hat back on me or something?
For the Air Force Guard.
Huh?
For the Air Force.
All right, everybody got their pictures? All right, thanks again. Good luck with y'all. Now, if some of y'all wanna wake through this whole agenda, feel free to. Well, that cleared it out a lot, didn't it? Well, that's why we moved it up on the agenda. We didn't want them to have to sit through this long agenda we have tonight. We have seven public hearings. So we're gonna get right on it. We have a public hearing for the Blue Springs School District Career Innovation Center rezoning and plan development concept plan amendments.
Mayor, the city has two exhibits to enter into the record. City Council information form dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following attachments: Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication they examine on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site, copy letter sent to said property owners, Title Four, Menu Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinance by reference, and twenty fourteen comprehensive plan by reference, bill approving rezoning and bill approving plan and development concept plan. The second exhibit is a presentation from the applicant. This is all we have to enter for the record.
All right, staff report.
I do. Adair Bright, nine oh three West Main Street. On behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in, before you this evening, I request for approval of a rezoning and a, and a plan development concept plan amendment. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximately one hundred and fifty thousand square foot building for the Career Innovation Center, which will be developed in two phases. Each phase will require a PD final plan, site plan design review prior to building permit issuance. The project is located at twenty-one oh one Northwest Vesper Street. It's currently zoned SF seven PD and SF seven and includes approximately twenty-five point two zero acres. The first request is to rezone approximately zero point six five acres that were recently vacated from SF seven to SF seven PD. The rezoning is required to include the property into the existing plan development for the Blue Springs High School campus. The second request is to amend the existing plan development to allow for the demolition of the existing freshman, freshman center and the construction of the proposed Career Innovation Center. The development is proposed to occur in two phases, with the western building being approximately ninety-five thousand square feet and completed in spring of twenty twenty-six. The second phase will be the eastern addition of approximately fifty thousand square feet and is anticipated to be complete in twenty twenty-nine. The site currently has three access points onto Northwest Vesper Street and one access to Northwest Ashton Drive through a private drive. The proposal includes removing one of the access points on Northwest Vesper Street and relocating the eastern access point to be entirely on twenty-one oh one Northwest Vesper. The property is also required a five-foot-wide ADA compliance sidewalk along Northwest Vesper Street, which is shown on the plans. The proposed building type is the prominent civic building, and all requirements except one are being met. The applicant is requesting a modification through the PD to allow for parking within the twenty-five-foot required setback from a street frontage. Staff is supportive of the request since the existing site does not meet that requirement and the previously approved PD concept plan for the Blue Springs High School campus allowed for that modification as well. The applicant provided a Schedule C parking memo, as required by the UDC, and there are a total of four hundred and seventy-five parking spaces being proposed. The applicant is requesting a modification to allow for the drive aisles to be twenty-five feet wide instead of twenty-six, which staff supports as it is also consistent with the rest of the high school campus. The applicant is requesting to waive the requirement that all islands within the parking lot be curved and landscaped. Staff is supportive of the modification as it is also consistent with the existing campus. The plans meet all required internal pedestrian access requirements along with a connection from the public sidewalk to the primary building entrance. The applicant has provided a conceptual landscape plan, which will be reviewed in greater detail with the PD final plan site plan design review. There is a request to waive the requirement for the two-point-five to three-point-five-foot tall shrubs to screen parking lot lights from a public right-of-way. Staff is not supportive of the request since the intent is to eliminate headlights shining into the public right-of-way and potentially affecting drivers. The proposed building will include a mix of white and gray metal panels along with precast concrete panels. The building includes a variation of projections to prevent the appearance of a flat facade. There will also be a roof terrace that wraps around the northwest corner of the building and will be accessible from the second story. Planning Commission held a public hearing on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and recommended unanimous approval of both applications. Planning Commission, yeah. Staff reviewed the rezoning application and finds that all review criteria have been met and therefore recommends approval of the rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the PD concept plan amendment with two conditions, including three of the modifications requested. Staff does not recommend approval of the request to waive the two-point-five to three-point-five-foot tall shrubs to screen headlights from Northwest Vesper, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, so, so this is two phases, and it's two applications, but we're voting on, uh, both together then, I guess, right?
Yes, it's the rezoning and the PD concept plan tonight.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else?
And, your quick question. I guess just, on that, uh, they're, they're suggesting not to put in the shrubs with the two and a half feet, uh, could you find the, does our code require that?
Yes, it requires that shrubs be installed along any parking lots adjacent to a public right-of-way to prevent headlights from shining into the public right-of-way.
Okay, I guess I'd be curious, I'll ask them then, when they come up, to explain that one.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Erickson?
Uh, along the same lines of the shrubs, uh, is that an adequate buffer for headlights shining into the right-of-way? What you just said, is our code good for that?
Yes.
And without the shrubs, we anticipate it would be a headlight problem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, staff. Uh, the applicant would like to come and answer any questions council might have.
Good evening.
May I sworn in?
Yes. Uh, Chris Koch, on behalf of the Blue Springs School District, eighteen oh one Northwest Vesper Street. Uh, good evening, council members, city staff. Um, I've got a brief presentation, uh, I think you would dare.
Put that microphone down to you, so you, there you go.
Height restricted here.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, before you today is the, the site plan that shows connectivity to the CIC campus with Blue Springs High School and the Blue Springs School District Central Office. We're pleased to show you this project today. Uh, next, please. Uh, this is the new Career Innovation Center campus to be built on the site of the former, uh, freshman center campus. This is the first floor plan, uh, next, please. Uh, second floor plan, uh, next again, please, thank you. Um, like I said, this will be built on the site of the former freshman center campus. A decision was made to replace that campus instead of reusing, uh, which was the plan that, uh, we presented to you a couple of years ago. Um, the backbone systems of that campus are nearing seventy years old, so electrical systems, mechanical systems, a lot of that is, um, sixty-nine to seventy years old, and it's cost prohibitive to, uh, try to reuse and replace, so we are replacing the entire campus. Next, please. Uh, we've got a series of outdoor terraces, uh, next, thank you, and rooftop terraces, next, and next again, please, thank you. Um, phase one of the project will be ninety-five thousand square feet. Phase two will be another fifty-five thousand square feet for a total of one hundred and fifty thousand square feet. A key design principle for the project is establishing a learning environment, uh, for students that looks and feels like a professional environment instead of a school. Uh, this is key in establishing real-world learning, which is the hype, uh, the key priority for this project. Whereas, uh, students will collaborate with connections with actual professionals, um, which is essential to the curriculum. Uh, the programs are a collaboration with the Fort Osage School District and organized in four groups, uh, gaming and technology, which is in front of you now. We've got esports, uh, next, please. Aviation, computer animation and game design, software and coding, um, digital media, next, please, next. Uh, then the next pathway is tourism and hospitality. This consists of culinary, uh, baking, hospitality, and next, uh, full-service restaurant for the community, uh, next, please. Uh, business, which consists of finance, business accelerator, digital media, intro to teaching, and Microsoft Lab. Next, next, please, next. And then medical. Uh, this is our largest program, which consists of nursing, advanced health sciences, pharmacy tech, surgical tech, uh, sports medicine, physical therapy, and vet tech. Next. Uh, we have a gymnasium that will serve, uh, as a part of that sports medicine, physical therapy space, as well as overflow for athletics for other school, uh, schools within the school district. Next, please. Um, we have a large centralized commons with a student-run cafe. This will act as the heart of the facility. Students will spend a half-day here, so there will not be lunch. They will go back to their home high school, um, which would be Blue Springs South, Blue Springs, and Fort Osage High Schools at the moment. Uh, next. Uh, we have a large multipurpose room space. This will serve for conferences, presentations, district-wide events, and hopefully future esports events for the state. Uh, next. Um, so phase one of the project is anticipated for completion in twenty twenty-six with phase two in twenty twenty-nine. And, um, Seth Shippey here with the school district can answer any questions about that variance request, but if you have any other, uh, questions, I'm here to answer.
Councilmember Kayler?
Yes, Your Honor. Could you go back to the number one page of his presentation, please? Okay, and then take your little hand and arrow or whatever and go right across where these shrubs are gonna be, uh, across from the football field that are deleted. Uh, my understanding is that the headlights, there wouldn't be an issue because you're gonna be shining right straight into the, excuse me, soccer field, um, that is located there, and I don't think that the shrubs being, not being there is gonna be an issue there. I just, just wanna point that out. Thank you, and I appreciate this.
Part of our requests were, uh, with the notion that every adjacent property that's affected by the variances is also owned by the school district.
Correct.
Anyone else? So with the expansion and the creation of Innovation Center, you were working in collaboration with Fort Osage 'cause that was known, that's a trade, if you wanted to get a trade. So now, in collaboration with them, they continue to do their thing, work with you all on doing the enhanced, improved, well, expansion of, of, of trade opportunities.
Phase two will see several of the programs get relocated from our Fort Osage. So I'll be welding, automotive, um, EMS, um, firefighting, other trade programs that are at that per, district still.
So, so Fort Osage, you maybe kind of phased out of it?
Yeah, the, the facility's quite old, and the hope is to have one hub for both districts here, actually for the entire eastern Jackson County, so maybe it'll serve additional districts in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goldbert?
I just wanted to say that I think this is an excellent project. I like the idea of our students staying close to home and being able to learn a trade, as colleges and for everyone, as we all well know. So I'm very supportive of this project.
Yes, this offers, um, students another avenue, uh, that doesn't have to end with college. Um, and this is a two-year program for most students, half-day, so they can get two-year accreditation and leave with professional certification by the end of the time they graduate.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yeah, I, on, on that question, um, I can understand that, uh, you on the property, where the lights may be shining, but I, I'm assuming that, uh, part of staff's concern is the traffic running on the road there.
It could be, yeah.
Traffic safety. Go ahead.
Uh, that may be the concern, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't wanna speak for the staff's concerns.
Let's say it is the concern, what would you, what's the corrective action, then?
Um, I will let Seth Shippey answer the, the questions about the, the variance request and, and why we're asking for those specifically.
All right.
Any other questions, not related to the variance?
Okay, nope. I think you answered it all. Except, Todd, when it come up, you need to answer some. May I sworn in?
Uh, Seth Shippey, uh, address now, is that correct? Eighteen oh one Northwest Vesper Street. Um, I'm the facility director, uh, for the Blue Springs School District, so all facilities, that's kind of what I oversee. And so the reason we're asking for variance, um, is be, there are, there's a few reasons. Um, with the screening around the, the parking lot, um, it just historically, it's been really tough because the proximity to the building and the proximity to water to keep that stuff alive. Um, and in our instances, we've seen many times where we've spent a lot of money, and then we have this nice facility, and then the stuff's dying around and it just doesn't look up to our standard. Um, and that's really the reason, that, you know, just to save some time and some money, um, and also just the look of our brand-new, nice, um, hopefully just really cool facility for, for our community. So that's the reason we're asking for that.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Good question.
Councilmember Erickson?
The, uh, shrubs, where that area would be, would that just be hard surface then? Or would, would there be like a rock thing or a, a perm or what?
From what I understand, it's, it's, it would be a rock around the parking lot and then shrubs within the rock all the way around.
So some kind of a landscaping area without the shrubs?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
But, but.
What, so is that what you're proposing?
Yes, to do, to do without, to do without that.
But to do without?
Without the screen.
Okay, you described shrubs and rocks, but you're, that you're proposing not to do that, then?
Correct.
Okay. So what are you proposing to put there?
Just grass, something that's easy to maintain.
Okay.
Um, for our facility.
Right.
All right.
If I may.
Councilmember Edmondson?
I can see you doing this because, you know, in some of the larger commercial areas we've done, where they used to require medians and, and trees and stuff, they found that it doesn't survive, it doesn't get enough water because the pavement's impervious to it, and then when they start plowing snow, that usually piles up there and kills it. So, um, I can support that measure because it doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your consideration, appreciate it.
We're gonna go to the public. You know, one audience likes speaking support of, support of. Opposition two, opposition two, yes, councilman?
One more question for staff then. I guess, uh, for city staff, uh, is there other options besides, uh, plant life that may not be the permanent structure there?
We have previously approved, um, kind of shorter walls. There's one at Water Burger by the drive-thru. We had them install that one to help prevent the same concern. So that would be an option as well.
Was there any discussion on something like that?
We didn't have that discussion, um, we told them what the requirement was, which was the shrubbery, and then they had requested not to include that.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna close this public hearing. We would like to introduce Bill number five-one-five-three.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill five-one-five-three, in ordinance rezoning property from SF seven, single-family district to SF seven PD, single-family district plan development for Blue Springs R four school district.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign?
Second reading of Bill five-one-five-three, in ordinance approving the plan development concept plan amendment for the Blue Springs High School Campus VSSD Career Innovation Center.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Um, th- this is, uh, the planning portion of it. I guess, uh, I can understand, um, the request not to put in the shrubs, et cetera, because of all the things that Councilmember Erickson, I mean, uh, Edmondson mentioned.
Thank you.
Uh, but I-
First reading of bill five-one-five-four, in ordinance approving the plan development concept plan amendment for the Blue Springs High School campus, VSSD Career Innovation Center.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, your honor.
Yes.
Um, th- this is, uh, the planning portion of it. I guess, uh, I can understand, um, the request not put in the shrubs, et cetera, because of all the things that councilmember Erickson, I mean, uh, Edmondson mentioned.
Thank you.
Uh, but I do, I do hope in good spirit that, uh, if this thing goes forward, that our city staff and the school district will work together and maybe there's some opportunities for a permanent structure that would serve the same benefit. I'm, I'm coming from the angle of traffic safety, uh, on, on Vesper. And, uh, I know that, uh, having lights, uh, blinding you as you're driving by, that can be dangerous, so, um, I think I under- where, where staff is at, understand that, uh, and, and just hopefully that, uh, you know, I realize it's not gonna be approved, uh, with, with that condition there, but hopefully something can be worked out.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-five-four, in ordinance approving the plan development concept plan amendment for the Blue Springs High School campus, VSSD Career Innovation Center.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and apply the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross? Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-seven-six.
Next, we have a public hearing on the Rainbow Center Conditional Use Permit.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on November eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of site, copy of letter to said property owners, title for land use, section Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, and twenty-fourteen conference of plan by reference, bill approving conditional use permit and bill approving final plat. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Thank you, staff report.
I do. I dare bright nine oh-three West Main Street on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn in. The next items on the agenda this evening are requests for a conditional use permit with alternative development standards and a final plat for Rainbow Center at nine-hundred Northwest Woods Chapel Road. The property is currently zoned general business and is located southeast of the intersection of Northwest Woods Chapel Road and Northwest Kings Ridge Drive. The first request is for a conditional use permit to allow for the school, elementary, middle or high land use on the property, which is proposed to encompass approximately three-point-three-zero acres. Currently, the land use exists on about two-point-eight-one acres. Since the applicant is proposing to plat the property, the legal non-conforming use is expanding, which now requires the conditional use permit review. The applicant has requested alternative development standards because the site would have to be drastically modified in order to come into conformance with the UDC. The modifications include reducing the parking stall length to eighteen feet, waive the requirement for bicycle parking, waive the internal pedestrian access requirements and waive all landscaping requirements. Staff does not believe reducing the parking stall length from their required eighteen-point-five feet to the proposed eighteen feet will have a negative impact since the existing drive aisles are wider than what is required by code. Staff feels as though the request to waive the bicycle parking and the internal pedestrian access requirements is justified since the site is existing and no development is being proposed. Lastly, staff supports the request to waive landscaping requirements because there's an existing tree buffer adjacent to the single-family houses on the east and south sides of the site. The second request is to replat the property for the purpose of ownership. There is an existing sidewalk and playground equipment on the property addressed at thirty-four-twelve Northwest Kings Ridge Drive that the Rainbow Center is wanting ownership of. Lot one is proposed to be approximately one-point-one-nine acres and will consist of the building at thirty-four-twelve Northwest Kings Ridge Drive, which is currently a fire station owned by Central Jackson County Fire Protection District. Lot two is approximately zero-point-four-nine acres and is addressed at thirty-four-twenty Northwest Kings Ridge Drive. The proposed lot two is currently owned by Jackson County Board of Services for Developmentally Disabled. Lot three is approximately three-point-three-zero acres and is the property where the existing Rainbow Center business is located. Planning Commission held a public hearing on November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three and recommended unanimous approval of the conditional use permit and final plat with the applicable conditions. Planning Commission also approved the preliminary plat on November twenty-seventh. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with alternative development standards with three conditions and approval of the final plat with two conditions, and I'm here for any questions.
Questions? None? The applicant present? Come up and be sworn in?
Hi, I'm Karen Brown, I'm vice president of Rainbow Center.
Why don't you get closer to that microphone, cause I can't hear you.
Vice president, I'm Karen Brown, Vice President of Rainbow Center, which is located at nine-hundred Northwest Woods Chapel Road. And as Dare said, we're trying to gain ownership and, uh, file, file the final paperwork that, um, shows ownership of all of the, um, basically the location of where we're at.
Okay, so staff has pretty much covered everything?
Yeah. And we're not reg- asking or requesting any, um, changes in the property, just finalization of, uh, property.
Any questions from the council? Saying none, thank you. We're gonna go to the public. You know, one noise likes speaking support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce bill number five-one-five-five?
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five-one-five-five, in ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow school, elementary, middle or high in the GB General Business zoning district at nine-hundred Northwest Woods Chapel Road Rainbow Center.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-five-five, in ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow school, elementary, middle or high in the GB General Business zoning district at nine-hundred Northwest Woods Chapel Road Rainbow Center.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-seven-seven.
Next interr- reading of bill number five-one-five-six?
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five-one-five-six, in ordinance approving the final plat for Rainbow Center, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-five-six, in ordinance approving the final plat for Rainbow Center, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-seven-eight.
Next, we have a public hearing on twenty-five oh-three Northeast Quail Walk Court Vacation of Utilities.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use, section Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, twenty-fourteen conference of plan by reference and bill approving vacation. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Alright, thank you, staff report.
Yes. Dave McCumber, nine oh-three West Main Street on behalf of the city. And I have been sworn in. Before you this evening is a request for a vacation of a utility easement located at twenty-five oh-three Northeast Quail Walk Court. The property is currently zoned SF seven, single-family. The request is for a vacation of a platted ten-foot utility easement located on lot forty-three of Quail Walk Seventh Platte subdivision. The east easement vacation will increase the buildable area of the lot, which is a desire of the homeowners. There is existing utility easement located on both sides of the property to which the adjacent property owners have access to. All utilities have consented to the vacation request. Once the vacation has been recorded, building permits for the proposed building and site improvements can be issued. Staff recommends approval of the vacation request with two conditions.
Okay, any questions? I guess you did a good job. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
You wanna come forward? And is there anything you'd like to add or?
No, we're just trying to get this vacation so we can add a garage to the back of our house and get the cars out of the driveway.
Well, go ahead and swear a man for saying that anyway.
I do, yes.
You already said it, we got, we'll note that. Alright, thank you, we'll go to public. You know, one noise likes speaking support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two? Close this public hearing. Next interr- reading of bill number five-one-five-seven?
I'll introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five-one-five-seven, in ordinance vacating a ten-foot utility easement on lot forty-three Quail Walk Seventh Platte subdivision.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign?
Second reading of bill five-one-five-seven, in ordinance vacating a ten-foot utility easement in, on lot forty-three Quail Walk Seventh Platte subdivision.
Your honor, approve the se- reading of the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-seven-nine.
Another public hearing on PS Property Services, the Conditional Use Permit.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three with the following attachments. Staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet of site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use, section Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, twenty-fourteen conference of plan by reference and bill approving the conditional use permit. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff report?
Yes. Alright, before you this evening is a conditional use permit request with alternative development standards for three-one-five Northwest Tenth Street. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Tenth and Vesper Streets. The app- applicant, Matthew Pickett, has made a request to operate his business, PS Property Services LLC, from this location. PS Property Services LLC falls under the building and construction contractor land use category of the Unified Development Code. The property in question is zoned GB General Business. In that zoning district, the building and construction contractor is a conditionally permitted land use. Furthermore, the Unified Development Code's special use standards provides additional regulations to this land use, which largely focuses on outdoor storage, parking of company vehicles, the location of overhead doors and so on. The applicant has requested four modifications, which include the allowance of existing overhead doors which front a collector street, which is a deviation from UDC section four-zero-five-point-zero-five-zero, A thirty-one, C one A. Staff supports this request as the building and its overhead doors exist and there are no plans to make further modifications to the building. The second request is the allowance for overnight parking of company vehicles in the front or street side of the building, which is a deviation from UDC section four-zero-five-point-o-five-o, A thirty-one, C one B. Staff is supportive of this request as the existing built site was designed in a way that meeting this criteria is not possible as the building is located along the back of the site and all parking is located on the street sides of the building. The third request is the ability to use paved, the paved area on the north side of the building for off-street parking, a deviation from UDC section four-zero-seven-point-zero-one-zero, table three. Staff supports this request as the site is limited with available parking. Since the company vehicles must be parked in this area, it reduces the number of available parking spaces for other tenants on the property and potential customers. Staff feels additional parking space is warranted. And the final is to allow for forty-five-degree angled parking stalls. And one second here. Forty-five-degree angled parking styles on the north side of the building, a deviation from four-zero-seven-point-o-one-o, table four. Staff is unable to support this request. The paved area on the north side of the building is of adequate, is of inadequate depth to park vehicles in the head-in variation. As seen in the photos provided by the applicant, the vehicles extend to the street curb line, which presents many safety concerns. It should be noted that many of the businesses in the area, specifically to the west of this property, are already parking in this manner, but have done so without approvals from the city. When a business is applying for permits or an approval such as this conditional use permit, staff attempts to prevent such activity when clear public safety concerns are presented. If further site development is proposed in the future, compliance with UDC will be required. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three and recommended unanimous, unanimous approval of the conditional use permit as submitted by staff. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with five conditions.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, your honor, um, so is what the Planning Commission approved, does it contain that forty-five-degree angled parking?
No, no, um.
Okay.
They, um, approved the staff recommendation, which was to not allow that forty-five-degree angle parking.
Okay, um, and I, I can appreciate staff, uh, saying no to the forty-five-degree angle. But I also thought, just prior to that, you said you are supportive of parking on the north side because it doesn't take up available parking spots. So how would you have them park, if that was correct?
So, there is adequate space in there to do a parallel parking space per our Unified Development Code. So, um, while you can't get, um, as many spaces, uh, in there as you can with the forty-five-degree angled parking, um, it does allow to get at least one vehicle off-street and onto the, onto the site in the parallel fashion. And there's enough space there to be able to open and close doors away from the building and not out into the street, uh, when you open that, that door.
Okay, so that, that is in what is being proposed to us tonight then?
Correct.
Okay, is the parallel parking?
Yes.
So, so we are approving what the, the Planning Commission has proposed with no, we don't have to amend it or anything like that to say, to say that then? I'm assuming.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I, staff's recommendation is to not allow the
Forty-five degrees?
Forty-five degrees.
I agree.
And so just approving it as staff has written it would not allow the forty-five-degree parking. Um, there would be nothing that would prohibit them from putting in a parallel parking space. Um, and so that would be their, their option that they have left.
Does the motion need to include, uh, the reference to staff?
Uh, typically
Recommendations?
Uh, typically don't, but it would be a prerogative if you do. Normally it's, uh, you know, would make a motion to approve and if there would be the need to change one of staff's recommendations or go against one of staff's recommendations, then, then perhaps that would be appropriate, but typically not.
But, but as submitted as it, it's the way staff would prefer.
As submitted to council, it, it would not include approving the angled parking because of staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Kayler?
So, I understand correctly, they were asking for three, um, forty-five degrees, is that correct? It was four, uh, only three parking spaces. So if they went to parallel parking, they're only gonna lose one anyway, it'd still be a two-car, you could parallel park two cars there. So, uh, um, I don't know what the, the, in, I don't see any reason why not letting them have the two parallel, they're only gonna lose the one spot of the forty-five, correct?
Uh, I don't necessarily know if two would fit, it definitely, one would fit, um, but whatever would, whatever could be fit within that paved area and meet this, the, um, city code requirements for a parking spot in terms of dimensions. If they could fit two, great, if they can only fit one, then that's what would be allowed. It was the, the request to do the angled parking, um, that, uh, staff recommends against, so.
Well, I, I think there probably is, in the measurements, if you, final measurements, you probably can see that it, it's gonna be pretty close to being able to have the two parallel park, but, uh, I don't have a problem with a parallel park.
Okay, any other questions to staff? Now we go to the applicant. Is the applicant present? Wanna be sworn in?
Yes. Matthew Pickett, three fifteen Northwest Tenth Street. Um, we're just, uh, we're fine with the parallel parking on that, um. We understand the limitations of it. We had just noticed that the area around several of our business, especially on that street, were doing it. And there were several up to fifteen cars parked that way already, and so we assumed it was already, uh, uh, and that, that street is the only street down there that allows for street parking, uh, in any way. Um, so we assumed it was already something, we didn't realize it was a, uh, not against, it was against what the city was asking, but, um, on everything else, it's been pretty explained, uh, pretty well explained.
Okay, unless there's some questions, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to public. You know, one noise likes speaking support of, support of? Okay, we'll go to public. Anyone in order to like speak in support of, support of, opposition to, opposition to? Close this public hearing. Anyone who would like to introduce bill number five one five eight?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five one five eight, ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow the building or construction contractor land use in the GB General Business zoning district located at three fifteen Northwest Tenth Street in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, for P S Property Services LLC.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and, oh, she's got to do it.
Second reading of bill five
I'm jumping ahead faster than you.
Second reading of bill five one five eight, ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow the building or construction contractor land use in the GB General Business zoning district located at three fifteen Northwest Tenth Street in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri, for P S Property Services LLC.
Now I'll say it. Your Honor, approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Question, roll call.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five two eight zero.
The next four public hearing has to do with the Unified Development Code. We go to the first one, public hearing on Unified Development Code amendment.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, land for ti- title for, land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinance by reference and twenty fourteen conference of plan by reference and bill. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff report.
I do. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, Mike Mallon, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn. First public hearing on Unified Development Code text amendments this evening is, uh, in regards to fencing design standards. Uh, the proposed amendments, uh, this evening are, um, came at the direction of city council, who, you remember, at the seven, or September fifth city council meeting directed staff uh, to bring forward amendments to solve some issues related to fencing, development reviews procedures for facade remodels and allowances for temporary signage. This first one is in related to the fencing, uh, helping to solve the issue of fence additions or, uh, fences that are added on to each other to achieve the desired height, whether it's for building code purposes or for, uh, safety or screening purposes. Uh, the new, um, design standards would, would require that any addition to an existing fence be of the same materials, color, and of a compatible design with the existing fence. The Development Advisory Committee, Commission recommends approval, uh, five to nothing of the U D C text amendment. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and likewise recommended unanimously approval of this fencing, uh, design standard amendment. Staff, uh, recommends approval as well. Uh, the specific language, uh, would state, sorry. These are in the wrong order. That additions or add-ons to fences to increase the height as permitted, otherwise, uh, under this section shall be of the same materials, color, and of a compatible design. So, really trying to ensure that any additions to the fence look similar and are nice. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, no one? Okay, we're going to go to the public then. Anyone in order to like speak in support of, support of, opposition to, opposition to? Close this public hearing. Anyone who would like to introduce bill number five one five nine?
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five one five nine, an ordinance amending section four oh seven point zero four zero point D point three of the Unified Development Code. The Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to adopt new fencing design standards.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Second reading of bill five one five nine, an ordinance amending section four oh seven point zero four zero point D point three of the Uni- Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to adopt new fencing design standards.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Question, roll call.
Councilmember Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five two eight one.
Another public hearing on Unified Development Code amendment.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, title for land use sections, Blue Springs City Code of Ordinances by reference and twenty fourteen conference of plan by reference and bill. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff report.
I do. Mike Mallon, on behalf of the city, nine oh three West Main Street, and I have been sworn. Uh, the second U D C text amendment tonight is, uh, related to the development review procedures, uh, for the exterior facade remodel of buildings. Um, the proposed amendment for facade remodeling removes the code required seventy percent, seventy-five percent threshold for exterior facade changes, uh, which would trigger the difference between an administrative site plan approval and a site plan design review approval that needs to go to the planning commission. Currently, the city code, uh, under, under four oh three oh seven oh A one s- sets these, um, parameters or criteria under which a site plan design review application could be reviewed administratively by staff or whether it needs to go to the planning commission for review and approval. One of those criteria states, uh, currently that any remodel or addition that involves an alteration of less than seventy-five percent of the exterior facade can be approved administratively. Uh, based upon the September fifth meeting and, and direction by council, staff has modified that, uh, with the following language, uh, to read that any remodel addition or renovation of an existing building which significantly changes the architectural character of the building as determined by the director, significant changes to architectural character include, but are not limited to, significant changes in exterior building materials, increasing or decreasing the openings and the building's facade by more than ten percent, and significant changes to the cornice line or slope of the roof. So, the effect of this change would mean that it is left up to the director's discretion as to whether the proposed exterior facade remodel uh, is significantly different enough from what is, um, currently, uh, the building currently looks like today as to whether or not such a change, uh, in a site plan design review application could be approved administratively or would be required to go to planning commission for approval. To go along with that, um, there is also a change, um, in section two under site plan and design review, where it says the following applications require review by the planning commission. Uh, and staff has added, uh, a modification under E that says the director shall have the discretion, discretion to require that any site plan and design review application that may otherwise be approved admini- administratively be sent to the planning commission for review upon a determination that the public interest would be best served by doing so. Currently, that provision is not in the code, uh, and this provision would allow anything that may qualify as an administrative review, uh, that if in the director's discretion, uh, either mine or another future director feels that this really is something that the planning commission should be reviewing, even if it meets an administrative criteria, uh, that could automatically kick that up from an administrative to a planning commission review approval. The third item is a, is just kind of a clarification, uh, under items that are required to go to the planning commission under two B that states any property or site modifications, it currently reads, any, um, site or development projects encompassing or involving more than five acres has to go to the planning commission. And what we've run into is we've had some very large sites, five acres or larger, where they're just doing a small thousand square foot addition or something that would normally be able to be handled administratively, but just due to the size of the site alone, uh, it automatically has to go to planning commission. So, what staff is, is doing through this modification is basically saying that any property or site modifications or development projects, that, that change itself is larger than five acres, then that has to go to planning commission. So if we have a, like, for example, the school district site this evening, which is, you know, thirty acres or larger, and if, um, if they were just doing a small building addition, that would have to go to planning commission for approval. But in this case, if they were doing a, uh, somehow, um, redeveloping a portion of the site and that area of which they're redeveloping encompasses more than five acres, such as adding a football field or something, then that would be the, uh, the trigger to have to go to planning commission. Uh, the Development Advisory Committee or Commission recommended unanimously approval of the proposed amendment and as did the planning commission at its, uh, public hearing, and staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question from council, councilmember Culpepper?
Yeah, I, uh, there's a lot of s- subjectivity in this. Um, number one, are you comfortable with that? And obviously, I'm going to assume you are. Um, and number two, if, what is the avenue for someone who is not getting the results that they want after bringing it to you?
In terms of my
What's their recourse?
Okay. Uh, to answer your first question, yes, I am, I am comfortable with that level of subjectivity. Uh, I personally err, uh, on the side of wanting to be transparent, um, but also business friendly. And anything that I feel, or, or that meets the criteria for being administrative, staff would typically want it to be administrative. That has been the direction that council has provided us in the past. Um, however, that's why the second provision was added in there, that if, under, in my discretion, I felt like, uh, this one has a little bit more to it, and I think the public interest would be best cer- and served by having this go to planning commission, um, then, then I would certainly do so. Um, the recourse is if, uh, as the director, I make an official determination that, uh, something has to, you know, something that could be approved administratively, and I determine, no, this is in the public's interest, that should have to go to the planning commission. That is an, an administrative decision by the ci- by the director, which could actually be appealed to the Board of Adjustment.
That was what I was looking for.
Yes.
The appealing process.
Yes.
If the applicant disagreed with your decision, they have another course of action.
There's absolutely another course of action too. It would be to the Board of Adjustment, who would review whether I'm overstepping my bounds, or if I'm using an error in judgment, or misapplying the code. Um, it wouldn't be app- appealing it to the planning commission or the city council. It would be following the standard appeals process for any administrative decision under the Unified Development Code.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, councilmember Levise?
Just to add on to that, the result would be, if they went to the Board of Adjustment and they still agreed with you, they just have to go to what the existing plan is now, right?
It would be whatever determination I made, right? So if, if I'd said this could be, it, it otherwise would be administrative, and then I said, um, nope, that has to go to the planning commission, and they didn't like that. Then they could go to the Board of Adjustment, and if the Board of Adjustment agreed with them, then, then I would be bound to handle it administratively. Uh, if they disagreed with that, then it would continue on.
Then they're no worse off than they are today, is what I'm saying.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Go to public. Anyone in order to like speak in support of, support of, opposition to, opposition to? Close the public hearing. Anyone who would like to introduce bill number five one six zero?
I will introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill five one six zero, an ordinance amending section four oh three point oh seven oh A of the Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to modify the development review procedures for site plan and design review applications.
Your Honor, remove the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second?
Second.
Question, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Second reading of bill five one six zero, an ordinance amending section four oh three point oh seven oh point A of the Uni- Unified Development Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to modify the development review procedures for site plan and design review applications.
Your Honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
The second?
Second.
Question, roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Curried unanimously and given ordinance number five two eight two.
Next, we have the very last U D C amendment.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City council information form dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication, the examiner on October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, title five sign code sections, Blue Springs City Code of Ordinances by reference and twenty fourteen conference of plan by reference and bill. This is all we have to enter for the record.
Staff report.
I do. Mike Mallon, nine oh three West Main Street, on behalf of the city, and I have been sworn. Uh, the final U D C, or actually the final amendment this evening, uh, for the public hearings is a sign code amendment, uh, related to temporary sign regulations. Uh, the proposed amendment for temporary signage provides additional flexibility for the permitting process and length of time uh, under which a temporary sign may be permitted throughout the year. Currently, the sign code allows for up to four temporary sign permits at a maximum of thirty consecutive days each for a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and twenty days total to be placed on a property throughout the calendar year. Those permits, uh, those four permits for those thirty day increments each one of those thirty days is a consecutive thirty days. Um, the proposed amendment allows for a single sign permit to be issued for greater than the thirty consecutive days or for that thirty day time period for temporary signage if the applicant identifies the proposed dates at the time of approval, um, for that same maximum of one hundred and twenty-eight days in the calendar year. Uh, the genesis for this was that some businesses or, um, civic organizations may want to do temporary signage, banners or feather flags uh, on the weekends or on specific days throughout the year. Um, and currently, uh, our sign code, uh, is pretty inflexible in terms of allowances for that. So, if somebody wanted to get a permit to put two sign, uh, you know, a sign up on Saturday and Sunday every weekend, um, our code would not allow for that because they have to be the consecutive days. So this permit, or this, uh, sign code amendment does allow for greater flexibility in that, in that if as part of that original sign permit they specify which dates they want to use it on, um, then we can approve that as part of one sign permit, and then that single sign permit would be granted in excess of that thirty days. And, uh, they would still be allowed to do the other three permits, because you're allowed up to four, uh, for a thirty day increment. So, it would allow, example, a church or a business, if they want to do something regularly every week, uh, but also down the road, over the summer, they have a special event where they want to have a sign up for thirty days, um, for, you know, a special event or a certain time of year. Uh, if it's a church for Easter, or a church for, you know, but summer Bible school or something like that, it would still allow those, so it doesn't quite, it changes the number of days that one sign could be up, but it still does allow for those special instances. Uh, the Development Advisory Commission recommended approval unanimously of this sign code amendment, and the Planning Commission, uh, recommended unanimous approval as well. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Everyone.
Okay, councilmember Erickson and then Culpepper.
Uh, I'm sorry, do you want to go first? Okay, um, would, how difficult would it be to modify this, for instance, if they wanted, somebody wanted one in July, and then they said, we don't want it in July, or whatever, and want, wanted to go to August? Would that require a whole new permit, or could you just come in and say, hey, let's change this to two other days?
Uh, I think we would err on the side of being flexible with that.
Okay.
Especially within the first few months, if not year, of, of trying to implement this and, and how we go about it as staff gets used to it, and also the, the businesses and public get used to this. It's going to take a little bit of time. Um, but yes, I think, I, I foresaw that exact kind of same thing happening, where they say, we want to put it up on Saturday and Sundays, and then halfway through the year, they decide, well, we'd really rather do this Friday and Saturday. I think we have the ability to go in and amend that first permit, rather than making them use up one of their other permits to do that.
Super, thank you very much.
Culpepper?
Uh, how would this affect the problem that we had, I don't know, maybe a year or so ago, where we had all the, it wasn't marijuana, but whatever, all those signs popping up at five o'clock on Friday and disappearing at seven o'clock Monday morning?
Um, it may not benefit it that much because most of those signs were illegal because they were placed in the city right-of-way. And the, uh, sign company and/or the business owner didn't get any permits for those.
But even if they were not in right-of-way, if they were, if they were on private property, how would that affect it?
They would have, we would make them get a permit for those, and they would be bound by the size, number, location, and timeframes of that said sign permit. So, um, this allowance may help, uh, reduce some of that visual clutter by providing allowances for more temporary signage throughout the entire year. Then, uh, what we have been told from sign companies and businesses and civic organizations is that the four permits for thirty consecutive days each really doesn't allow them that kind of flexibility. So, um, it will allow more flexibility and actually help, um, could help reduce some of the sign clutter of those signs because a business like that may not put all of those out, if they're allowed to put those out with a valid permit, uh, and a larger sign, uh, in regard, so they may not need as many signs if they could do a larger sign. So it may actually help with that.
Uh, I, because that was a terrible disaster.
Mm-hmm, certainly understand.
And what else? Great seeing you, Nick. Thank you. We'll go to the public. Anyone in order to like speak in support of? Great seeing you, Matt. Thank you. We'll go to the public. Anyone who wants to speak in support of? Support of, opposition two, opposition two. Close this public hearing. We'll go to introductory bill number five one six one.
I will introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five one six one, an ordinance amending section five oh one point oh seven oh of the Sign Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to adopt new temporary signage regulations.
Your honor, move the bill, bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of I?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Second reading of bill five one six one, an ordinance amending section five oh one point oh seven oh of the Sign Code of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs to adopt new temporary signage regulations.
Your honor, move to approve on the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five two eight three.
That concludes all the public hearings for this evening. Now we'll move on to introductory reading of bill number five one six two.
I will introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five one six two, an ordinance approving the final plat for Eagles Creek of Blue Springs, first plat lots one through thirty-three, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of I?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Second reading of bill five one six two, an ordinance approving the final plat for Eagles Creek of Blue Springs, first plat lots one through thirty-three, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson.
Aye.
Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five two eight four.
Directly read bill number five one six three.
I will introduce.
First reading of bill five one six three, an ordinance approving the final plat for Copperleaf Shopping Center, second replat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of I?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Second reading of bill five one six three, an ordinance approving the final plat for Copperleaf Shopping Center, second replat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Cole Pepper.
Aye.
Kayler.
Aye.
Levisay.
Aye.
Fowler.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five two eight five.
Next we have, Mr. Green, bill number five one six four.
I will introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five one six four, an ordinance amending section two fifty-five of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to clarify placement and storage of trash containers for residential properties.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, your honor.
Okay.
We'll go with you, and then we'll come down to council member Fowler.
Go to me. Could I ask the, uh, staff to clarify the fourth paragraph of the whereas in that amendment, where it says the solid waste management commission, et cetera, et cetera? What's that? I, I think I understand it, but when I read it, it's confusing to me.
The fourth whereas.
Oh, it talks about five feet, no closer than.
What, what page are you on?
I think he's looking at the actual words.
Are you looking at the ordinance? Okay.
Fourth whereas.
Yeah, the fourth whereas, which says the solid waste management commission recommended amending the city code to remove the requirement that trash and trash containers could not be deposited for pickup closer than five feet from the dwelling premises. Um, on October seventh, twenty twenty, and March seventh, twenty eighteen, uh, the solid waste management, uh, commission meetings, and then, uh, the solid waste management commission also made a presentation to city council on June eighteenth, twenty eighteen, with that recommendation. So solid waste management commission had met and discussed this many times over the last five years, uh, most notably from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty. And, uh, as part of their recommendations, uh, and each time they met and subsequently made a, uh, presentation to council in June of twenty eighteen, one of their top items was to remove this section that we're changing tonight, which, um, seemingly prohibited anybody from putting their trash out for pickup closer than five feet from their house. So you couldn't put it at the curb. So that was one of their recommendations dating back to twenty eighteen, uh, was to do away with that, uh, confusing provision of the code.
Good, thanks.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, your honor, um, on this, this is, this is talking about Blue Springs and where we put our trash on trash day, and, uh, putting it at the curb. That's something that's been into effect before I got into Blue Springs in nineteen eighty-six, I think it was. Um, and matter of fact, we may have some of the authors here with, uh, Alderman, uh, former Alderman Hubbard and, and your, and former Alderman Ross. I don't, I don't know who, maybe you, uh, approved that when you were on there in the eighties? I don't know. Where, where did?
It, it originated in nineteen seventy-five.
Oh, just about a year before?
I was, no, I was there starting in seventy-six.
Okay, so, so I guess it's been there a long time, and I just want to make sure I understand that the communications are going to be clear to our citizens, because that's really one of the first things, when you move into Blue Springs, a lot of us hear from our new neighbors, is that, hey, we, we have to leave our trash by the house. And if that's gonna be changing, I want to make sure that our citizens are very much aware of it, so one citizen, one citizen knows and the other one doesn't. I, I don't want that situation to happen. I don't, hopefully, everybody will know, uh, when it's time to go into effect. So, as, as, what are staff's plans on that?
But, but you know, I, I can recall, one of the reasons we did not want it curbside, back then, it was before trash bins. People put it in trash bags, and cats and dogs got into the trash, and you end up having trash up and down the street.
Yep, yep.
Matter of fact, I used to try to put something to discourage it on my bags.
Okay, keep the animals away.
Keep them away, so I don't have to go out there and start picking it up and put it in another bag.
Yeah.
So that was kind of the purpose of it, if I recall, uh, the reason they say, well, keep it up closer to the house. Now, dogs and cats could see I get it up close to the house too, so.
So staff will, or has already made plans to, uh, should this be approved tonight, uh, we will, um, put things on all the social media, uh, put thing, put information press release on social media, uh, information on the city's website, uh, mail and email, uh, notification to all registered HOAs that we have on file with the city, and also reach out to all the different trash haulers that we know that are doing business in the city, uh, to let them know as well that, uh, this change has been made.
Um, how about the mayor's email newsletter? Would that be a good avenue?
Absolutely. Any suggestions that council may have, we'd be happy to, to add to that. I think, uh, wholeheartedly agree with you that the more we can broadcast this, the better off it'll be.
When is the next time a postcard comes out that tells you about a, a new, uh, event flyer or, uh, the parks?
I think that will be. That, we, we'll issue that in January, uh, as the next magazine, so that we issue the postcard and then directs people back to the magazine, so we're working on that for January.
It was mentioned in there too.
Yep.
Any others? All in favor of I?
Aye.
All in the same side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, two, uh, two noes?
So, your honor, so a no vote means we're gonna leave it at five foot from the house?
Yes.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
A yes vote means it's gonna be allowed to go to the curb?
Yes.
I'm a no.
Okay, you want to ask again? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Aye.
Post no?
No.
No.
Roll call it, to see if we go on to a second reading.
Councilmember Kayler?
No.
Levisay?
Okay, so if we, if this gets voted down, are we not going to second reading?
Yeah.
So can I, can I make comments then, even though it's inappropriate for the, what we're doing currently? The, the, the only thing I would add is-
Do you want to get into a second reading and defeat it?
No, I'm, I'm an I, but I think what we're missing in this is there's two sections to this. One is putting it on the curb, the other is requiring it within five feet of the house. Right now, the way the ordinance reads, on trash day, you have to have it within five feet, but the other six days, it can be at the curb. So we don't want to vote this down, because then we're gonna miss something that I think everybody wants. So if there's a, if there's gonna be will to turn this down, we want to split it. So I'm gonna vote I, and then I guess we'll see what happens.
Well, so I have a question then. So what you're saying is that if we allow, or say, okay, you can take your trash out to the curb, that's gonna keep people from leaving their trash at the curb? I mean, we have that all over town. And I don't see that that's gonna help that situation.
Yeah, item E requires it within five feet all the days except trash day, so, but currently, our code doesn't do that. So currently, you can have your trash at the curb six days a week.
That's correct.
And then you have to bring it back to the house on trash day.
Yes, because it's poorly written, but the way that this, and that's why it's been difficult to enforce. The way that the code amendment is written is that city or, uh, on trash day, somebody may place their trash at the curb. They're not required to do so. They are, they may do it. And, um, but they can do that the night before, uh, at six o'clock the night before, on trash, the day before trash day, and the trash can be put at the curb through ten o'clock on trash day. That's the only time it's allowed to, a trash container is allowed to be at the curb. At all other times, the trash can must be stored within five feet of the house, is the way that the proposed language is written.
So that's the way it's written.
That's all, to make sure we understood what you were voting on.
That, that's the way it is written and proposed to you this evening.
Right.
Can we rewind?
Yes, what do you want to rewind?
I'd-
To vote over? Start to vote over again.
Since, since we-
Oh yeah, we're gonna start it over again.
Your honor.
We're gonna start it over.
I don't like either one of those.
I, since we're, since we're kind of ad-libbing this discussion, it, am I correct that, uh, council member, um, all, Levisay or all of you, uh, most of us are in favor of B section two, but our question is B section one, is that correct? We want to change it so that they have to be stored by the house on non-trash days?
No, we're all in favor of E. We may or may not be in favor of B section one or two, but we're all in favor of E.
So what is wrong with two? It, it says that it gives the days on two of B.
I'm in favor of two, but I don't know that-
Well, I am, I am as well. I'm just not in favor of being, of the five feet of the, uh, curbside.
I think B two is the curbside. It's my understanding, yes. Mike is shaking his head. Yes, so- B, B is curbside. Yes, section one, just, all, all it changes is, it, where it says today, all solid waste shall be deposited for pickup till the additional language and the stricken language it would read, the code today would read. All solid waste, including trash containers, shall be deposited for pickup, no closer to the street than five feet from the dwelling. So that is what the code says today. So on trash day, that trash can has to be within five feet of your house. Uh, the proposed amendment reads, all solid waste, including trash containers, may be deposited for pickup either at the curb or no closer than five feet. Um, we've heard some residents who, uh, maybe have difficulty walking it all the way down, and there are still some trash companies that may be willing to provide the service to come pick it up if it's five feet from your house. We wanted to accommodate for both of those. Section two says, if you're going to put it at the curb, if you choose to follow number one, that says you may deposit it at the curb, that these are the only times of day that it can be deposited for pickup, which is six o'clock the night before your trash day through ten o'clock on collection day. And then, uh, letter E says, taking into account one and two above, at all other times throughout the week, other than when you may put it at the curb during those specified times, it has to be within five feet of your house.
That cleared it up pretty nicely.
Actually, you said something there that bothers me, and you said trash, some trash providers may be willing to go ahead and continue to pick it up if it's five feet from the house, and that bothers me, because I don't want a trash hauler to say, hey, we don't have to do that now.
Yeah, um, certainly understand that. Um, what is happening in certain neighborhoods is that the trash haulers are saying, we won't pick it up if it's not at the curb. And there, and that is the problem, is we have HOAs all throughout, um, certain parts of the city, where the trash company has told residents, in violation of the code, we will not pick up your trash unless it is at the curb. We will not come up to your house and we won't get it. And so this is helping to clarify that, while also, you know, some resi, you know, we've also had some trash haulers throughout some of this, um, feedback and things we, and meetings we had with the solid waste management commission dating back to twenty eighteen, uh, where they said they've left Blue Springs or would not do business in Blue Springs because of that five-foot rule. So this is trying to help really accommodate both, but yes, your point could be taken to mean that some trash haulers would choose to not do that.
But, but I think in some cases, you kind of alluded to earlier, that where somebody, uh, uh, the elderly may be having trouble getting the container to the curb, if that company is willing to be customer service to provide, uh, by the house, then I think that's fine for them to do that.
If they won't, then that's.
Well, I-
Councilmember.
Uh, the, the only problem I, that I personally see with this is that it'd be fine if we had a single trash service for, a certain area, but there are streets in Blue Springs where every other house has a different trash service. So that means you will have trash at the curb five days a week.
Anyone else?
If, if I may, uh, let's stick to the topic and not run off onto a single side service.
That is part of the topic, because we're talking about putting it out to the curb. And by allowing it out to the curb, and everybody has a different pickup person and pickup day, now you have trash every day out at the curb.
You still, always will, yeah, until you get to that point of saying you're legislating that you're gonna have a single hauler.
Single hauler.
But this is trying to say that, and put an enforcement part of it in there, because if you leave it as it is, we can enforce the rule.
I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying, that's to me, an issue.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm, now I'm back to confusion, because what are you saying you can't enforce? It's pretty, pretty abrupt there, that if it's five foot to the house, and you're not abiding by that, then you're in violation. And now all we're doing is muddying up more water, it seems like, by saying, okay, so you can just go ahead and put it to the curb, but we'll gamble on whether or not my trash hauler will come to my, and pick it up to, at the house, if I'm gonna leave it at five foot.
One last thing. People I've talked to, and myself, and through the years, I would like it to say that it's okay to have your trash up by the curb if you so want. I don't want it to become a requirement. I also like the statement that is not clear right now, that you cannot have your trash either, uh, out by the curb if you select to do so anytime except during these hours that are listed in section two. Uh, I don't see that it's that clear. Um, I'd support part of it and not the rest of it.
Okay, well, our vote will define it. We're gonna do a roll call on first reading.
Councilmember Kayler?
No.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Second reading?
Yeah, second reading.
Second reading of bill five one six four, an ordinance amending section two by five of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to clarify placement and storage of trash containers for residential properties.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, roll call.
I, your honor, I just, uh, appreciate staff making sure that our residents are very clear on this, because we've had quite a discussion here tonight. So, uh, that's going to be a good communication challenge to make sure it's clear to everybody.
Okay, we'll do a good job in making sure it's clear.
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, roll call.
Councilmember Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
No.
Kayler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, oh, not carried unanimously, uh, carried with a vote of four ayes to three noes, and given ordinance five two eight six.
Okay, introductory reading, bill number five one six five.
I will introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five one six six, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for the city's participation in the regional household hazardous waste program.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second.
Six five, six four.
We got a wrong number going.
Six five, five one six five.
We skipped the prohibited parking.
Prohibition of parking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Oh.
I'll introduce that one also.
Okay.
First reading of bill five one six five, an ordinance amending title three, section, schedule three, prohibited parking, certain sections of designated streets, table three A, no parking at any time of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, to add a new paragraph prohibiting parking on northeast Sunnyside School Road and northeast Third Street.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, your honor.
Yes, council member.
I don't know who, which staff this would be to, I, there's not a lot of explanation as to the reasoning of, of this. I don't know if this public works. Can you explain why we would be prohibiting parking in these areas?
There was, there was a sight distance problem on, on, uh, Coronado, yes.
So from, this is, um, Sunnyside from Coronado, basically Field House and where the swig is gonna go, so how far south- So how far south does that go? What, what is two hundred ninety-six feet?
It is two ninety, yeah, I'm not sure where that exactly came from. It might be, it might be related to the speed since, um, Sunnyside's, uh, thirty-five mile an hour.
So is that probably a little past the parking lot where the real estate company is, where Swig's gonna be built, somewhere down in that area? It's not the whole length of Sunnyside where the apartments is?
It's, it's just, it's just south two ninety feet, two hundred ninety feet, um, I'm not sure what, where that driveway exactly falls. I know it's signed now, it's been signed since April.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Somebody, yes, somebody where that sign is now, where the sign is now, okay.
Would, would fall in what you're talking about, yes.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Second reading of bill five-one-six-five, an ordinance amending title three, schedule three, prohibited parking. Certain sections of designated streets, table three A, no parking at any time of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri to add a new paragraph prohibiting parking on northeast Sunnyside School Road and northeast Third Street.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
All right, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-eight-seven.
Now we have, introduce the read of bill number five-one-six-six.
I will introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five-one-six-six, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for the city's participation in the regional household hazardous waste program.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Second reading of bill five-one-six-six, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for the city's participation in the regional household hazardous waste program.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-eight-eight.
Next introduction, read bill number five-one-six-seven.
I will introduce, your honor.
First reading of bill five-one-six-seven, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Blue Springs and Central Jackson County Fire Protection District for Tactical Medical Services.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Second reading of bill five-one-six-seven, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Blue Springs and Central Jackson County Fire Protection District for Tactical Medical Services.
Your honor, move the, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-eight-nine.
Last one for tonight, introduce the read of bill number five-one-six-eight.
I will introduce, your honor.
An ordinance approving an agreement with the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection District for cer- certain public infrastructure improvements.
Your honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There's a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same side?
Second reading of bill five-one-six-eight, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection District for central public infrastructures, for certain public infrastructure improvements.
Your honor, move to approve the second reading and provide the proper ordinance number.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levise?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously and given ordinance number five-two-nine-zero.
Next we have one-on-one visitors' appearance forms, and that's from, uh, former Alderman Leon Hubbard. Leon, we have a three-minute limit. Once you start talking, the clock starts running. So come on up and talk.
Anything in three minutes at my age.
Took you three minutes to stand up for Leon.
What I'm here for, and I've been working with Dave McCumbe, I keep forgetting McCumbey, uh-
Get, get by that microphone.
I'm sorry, on, yeah, on two different things actually, but what we've got, uh, I'm one of those people that is backed up to what's gonna be the city park, uh, very south of a lot of our properties there. And we've got people going in and hunting with guns and bows. And I can attest, I called the Blue Springs Police about six weeks ago because my wife and I were sitting in our dining room there with a sliding door screen open. And boom, boom. And if it had been pointed at the house, they were close enough, it would have hit my house. And what I'm here to ask, and I don't know if you've had any luck with the, uh, park department, have you, Dave?
Uh, I, I've not heard, um-
Back to the, well-
Back at this point, so.
That's, that's what I'm here for.
Now Leon, is that in Jackson County?
Uh, yeah, that's in Jackson County. It's, you're gonna have a city park there someday, uh, and it's gonna be shelter housing all, a few years ago. When I found out it was going there, I asked you about that. And I was thinking if there was, uh, softball playing there, soccer and so forth, that we'd have to have some four-way stops between Liggett Road and the park. And you told me that I probably didn't have to worry about it bec- I'm just, because by the time you got money to develop it, I'd probably be dead. Now that's what you said, it made me, it made me, it made me feel real good. It made me, yeah. Do you, do you remember that? Okay, but here's, here's what we're, me and a lot of neighbors, there's about fourteen hundred foot of your park. It goes from the conservation ground, which people can hunt, bow hunt, and in certain times, I think they can do black powder. But that goes from, my neighbor next door is where that property line between the, the, the conservation ground and our ground starts. And it goes clear down to the, the, uh, Christian church there. And if, you know, we would love to see some kind of signi- signage every twenty-five foot, but we probably won't get that. But if we got them, if we had the signs every, uh, fifty foot, there would only be thirty-five signs down through there that you could have placed on some kind of tree that's on your property. And people would know that, hey, you don't go in there and, and shoot turkeys, wild turkeys, or, or whatever you shoot. And we really feel like it would be a, and, and then some of the time, what they do, if they've gotten something down in that area, they'll drag it up through some of our houses like a dead deer, or whatever they shoot down there. So that's, that's, that's what I'm here for, is to try to get some signage on what's gonna be your park that I'll probably did before we develop it. But if-
My, my question though, Leon, thi- this is county stuff that you're talking about right now, right?
No, it's not the county, you're, it's you guys' ground.
They're doing it on Quaker Hills Park.
Huh? It's on the very south side.
It's South Park.
South Gate Hills.
That's where they're coming in there shooting?
Yeah.
What address is it?
They come from both directions, but if, if we knew, if they knew they couldn't legally, you've got your, your lift station down there for the lift station that they had to have to develop south part of clear on down as far as Blue Springs goes. And they're, you're, you're-
Leon, I'm trying to get an understanding of this. Okay, they're doing it on city property, we have laws prohibiting-
I know that.
-firing of guns and stuff anyway, so.
But, but people don't know that that's city property.
Right, so, so my understanding is, so this is Seven Highway, this is Blue Springs Christian Church. And, um, I believe, um, it's this cul-de-sac right here where, uh, hunters are parking and then walking through the city's property to access Bridger Conservation Area over here. So the dividing line of where you can hunt and cannot hunt is basically right down through here. So I'd be willing to guess that some of those lines get blurred.
I'm at twelve-twelve Southwest South Trench Drive. I'm definitely in the city limits, 'cause I pace it tactically.
I know you're in the city.
Right.
And this, this ground that I'm talking about, it's gonna be a park someday. And it, it goes clear from my neighbor's corner of her lot, it's to the west of me. And it goes clear down to, back, backs up to the Christian church down there, the new, the originally new Christian church. And, uh, like I say, if, if you put signs after every fifty foot, you would only need thirty-five signs in that whole lift, whole area there to keep people from going down in there hunting with shotguns, rifles, bows.
Okay, Leon, signs are not gonna stop anybody from doing anything, but my question is, is are they actually doing the shooting and hunting in our park, which is in the city limits?
You bet they are.
Which is prohibited.
Your, your park is right behind my house. And that's what I just said a while ago, about six, and in fact, I called your police force. And there was two of them came out there, and I told them what was going on, 'cause it, it had been a double, it had been a bam-bam. And it was, I guarantee you, it was in, in eighty foot of my house.
Yeah, which is-
And it's your, it's your eighty-acre park that they're going into.
So, so staff, what's your recommendation? How to resolve that? Certainly, we can't control what they do on the county conservation park.
No, we can't, and-
On our property, how do we, how do we deal with that?
Um, I'd have to, to ask, um, Dennis, Senior Director of Parks, for his interpretation of what we could do within the city parkland. Uh, the city only owns the land west of the future twelfth street extension. Uh, the land to the east is owned by the church. Um, and, um, I, I believe one of the concerns that has been posed or been made aware in some of the conversations with staff is that some of the hunters are parking in this area here. And then, um, so I think one solution could be, uh, some signs put up there that says no hunter parking or no, uh, conservation access allowed through from here to basically stop people from parking there. Uh, in terms of posting signs throughout, what is the city park versus as a boundary between that and the conservation area, I would have to discuss that further with, um, the city administrator and, and, uh, and Dennis to, to see what the best solution available would be.
That parkland you own goes from behind our houses, cleared the road, and I can't tell you the name. Huh?
Cowherd Road. Down to Cowherd Road.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the one that-
Or Wyatt, yeah, sorry.
Next road down goes to Colonial Nursery one way, and the other way, I think the city must have had a deal with, uh, fire people. We've got a fire station down there too. But it's, um, mile and a half down there. Yeah, that's all I'm asking, is to feel more safe in my own house.
Well, why don't we have staff looking to see, what, what kind of options do we have to try to deal with this?
Yes, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, yeah, Leon, we'll look into it and try to see what we can do.
Can't ask for more.
And, and you're still gonna be alive, Leon, you're gonna live-
Oh, I hope so. I still just gig once.
Now I remember when you could do it faster than that. Uh, okay. We will move on to a mayoral announcement, stop, supondo, I'm sure I've used this before during my course of sixteen years,